It's called this planning commission meeting to order. It's Monday, October twenty fourth at seven P M. And twenty eighth? Twenty eighth of October. Got it. All right, great. Um, so we don't need to establish a quorum, or do we? Roll call vote or anything?
Establish for you, so Commissioner Hogan?
Here.
Mr. Shane?
Here.
Mr. Shane?
Here.
Mr. Prior is absent, as well as Commissioner Iver.
Great, so, great. So we'll move on to approval of the minutes from our last meeting, September sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Did everyone get a chance to review? And would anyone like to make a motion?
I motion to approve the minutes from September sixteen.
All right, um. Do we need to call for public comment on the minutes? Yeah, all right. Is there any public comment on the minutes from September sixteenth, twenty twenty four? Oh, I'm seeing one hand on Zoom. Julie, go ahead.
Yes, I hope everybody can hear me okay tonight with the rain. Um, I'd like to comment that I really appreciated in your planning commission minutes. That there was a little bit more detail to the public comment. Um, I really would advise your secretary to avoid doing, um, like comments were made without giving any comments. That's happened a lot lately in minute record keeping. That they'll say the public participant's name and that comments were made. But no comments are listed that they were made. Um, so I, I know you don't need to see everything everybody says. It's really short script, but I just am hoping we don't see that during planning commission minutes. And then I think the minutes you guys had last time were fairly a good example. So just, just some props to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Julie. We, um, didn't have audio for the first part of your comment, but, um, I gather that you are in support of the format in which the minutes were done in our last meeting. Is that correct? Or is there anything you wanted to add?
I would like to make sure my audio is okay, more or less.
Yes, we can hear you now.
I was just saying, I love that you guys actually had a little bit of comments about what people say in the comments, except and not saying just that comments were made. Like, that's happening a lot. I'm not really sure that I saw that in your minutes, but I just just something I'd appreciate not to see in the future within planning commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Is there any other public comment on the approval of the minutes from September sixteenth, twenty twenty four? All right, seeing none, eh, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Great, is there a second?
All second.
Great, all those in favor? Aye. All right, the motion passes unanimously, and we are on to item number two, which is public input. So the public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the planning commission that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The planning commission may provide up to fifteen minutes for this public input session. And to assure that each individual presentation is heard, the planning commission may uniformly impose time limits of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the planning commission takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here that would like to provide public comment on anything that is not on the agenda and within the scope of the planning commission? I see hands on Zoom, nobody, nobody in person? Okay, then we'll go to Zoom. Lori, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Um, so, two things. One, I was hoping to, um, share that at the last city council meeting, I suggested that each commission have a representative come to the next, or each city council meeting and do their report, um, in person, either the chairperson or representative from the commission. I feel like since there is so much, and I've, I've heard from someone else, that since there is so much more work that the commissions are doing for the city, that it would be valuable to have a direct um, report from a commissioner, uh, whether it's the chair or a member to the city, um, to, to, at the city council meeting. So that was something, um, I wanted to bring to you. Um, I haven't gone to all the commission meetings yet, but I will ask that of each commission. Um, instead of just a written report, some things that's a direct report from a commissioner. And then, the other question is, um, Matthew, I'm, I'm not sure I'll say your name correctly. But I guess, um, it's my understanding you don't live in your house in Blue Lake, but you're serving on the commission. So I was just want to understand how that is appropriate, um, as a commissioner. So those are my comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And before we move to the next public comment, I wanted to ask staff if we have a timer, um, going? Yeah, if we could get that going, that'd be great. And then, um, okay, Julie, go ahead. I see you have your hand up.
Thank you. Um, just so you know, I suggested in the past to put the timer right in front of the laptop on the end of the table there, because then Zoom participants can actually see it. If not, just give us a thirty second, um, pro bono. I'll let that eat my time. This will be my thirty seconds, that, or three minutes, that's fine. Lori, I appreciate your comments. Um, I have brought that up in the past, asking kind of the same thing for like a commissioner report. Or just our commissioner being in the public. Um, you don't even have to say anything at our council meetings. You can stay nonpartisan, but be present. And, and I think maybe you guys could take turns doing that or something. I did suggest to one of our public works workers too, to have a public works report at the councils. Um, other municipalities do that. This is a planning commission, however, that you guys do work with them. So I do support all of that. I support all of it. That's great. Um, I want to get back to the truck route and you know, I talked to a lot of people in town, especially the people that are having to navigate it. I've seen the navigation. And there's a lot of damage happening on the exterior of, um, the Broadway there, Boulevard, onto the county side that really has me concerned. Um, I know it's county, however, our project is causing that damage. And I just, and the bulb out that is, um, leaving town there is what's causing the trucks not to be able to actually pull over to the side there and make that turn safely. We have trucks now turning in oncoming traffic. And as a parent and as somebody that like, I just, I'm so nervous all the time about it, you guys. It's been really sloppy. It's been messy. It's cleaning up. I hope that you, you know, are staying in the process of this as concerned commissioners. As well as everything else that's on the board here. You're all kind of new to what we're dealing with now. There's great resources, access humble all the minutes, talk to your staff, talk to your community, and we all appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Julie. Is there anyone else that wanted to provide public comment? This is for items that are not on the agenda and that are relevant to the scope of the planning commission. Anybody in person? Yeah, sure. Um, is this podium arranged? Okay, for him, is this? Great.
I just wanted to give a little feedback on the construction project we have going up by the school. The brick inlay, um, as you're leaving town, um, if your tire hits that and the brick is wet, you'll actually start spinning out on it. So, um, if you're going to make that turn, um, you, you're expecting to accelerate at a certain rate, but if you hit that, your tire begins to spin. So I think that is something we need to look at in the future, especially when it's wet. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else wishing to provide public comments? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment. And then, um, I do want to make a note on the agenda that we have a commissioner that has joined us midway through the public comment session. Um, hi, I'm Elaine. Matt, Commissioner Matt, what's your last name? My Matt Isaac has joined us midway through the public comment session. Welcome, Matt. And so now there are four of us present.
Jean, I'm sorry, can I interrupt?
Um, yeah, did you have public comment, Jean?
Michael, um, living in Blue Lake? Was, was that an inappropriate question to be answered at this time, or can we have an answer for that?
Yeah, so public comment's not meant to be a back and forth. It's meant for the commissioners to take information from the public. And if, um, at a later time, anyone wanted to give recommendations to staff, we can do that. But public comment's not meant to be a back and forth. It's actually a violation of the Brown Act to conduct a meeting like that. So we won't be responding to any public comments, but we're here to take in the input from the public during that public comment session. That is for each agenda item, and then this is the general one here, um, for items that are not on the agenda.
Yes, I, I, I understand that, but, uh, can we at some point have that, um, clarified? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, so seeing no other public comments, we are now definitely officially closing the public comment section. And moving on to approval of tonight's agenda, has everyone had a chance to review? Is there anything anyone wanted to move around? Um, or can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
All motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, um, we need to give public comment on the agenda, on the approval of the agenda? Okay, okay. And then do public, okay, great. So we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any public comment on the approval of the agenda and the order of things tonight? No changes anyone wants to recommend? Oh, we have, um, Julie, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Are we having the climate action plan tonight?
That is on the agenda as item number six. So three, three more items down from, from where we are now.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.
Great. All right, seeing no other public comment on approval of the gen- agenda item number three, we have a motion and a second. Can I get a vote? All those in favor? Aye. All right, it passes unanimously. We have an agenda. So, moving on to our discussion and action items, item number four is a discussion of the general plan housing element update. So we're going to get a presentation from staff on the draft, um, CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act Negative Declaration that was prepared for the housing element update.
All right, good evening, commissioners. So, uh, this item's on the agenda simply to give an update, uh, at this point to the planning commission. Um, as you may have read in here, uh, the circulation period for the, uh, CEQA document ended on Sunday. Um, so probably the point at which the commission would be making a recommendation on the housing element update in the CEQA document, the city council would be your regularly scheduled November meeting. In the meantime, we thought it'd be a good idea to schedule this, uh, on the agenda for you guys to review the CEQA document, to take public comment, to ask questions of staff, things like that. So we want to provide another opportunity for you to consider this document and the housing element update and your recommendation to the city council. So I'm just going to read through, uh, the staff report real quick. It's fairly brief. And then I recommend that you, uh, open the item after a public comment. So as noted in the brief staff report here, and as folks in the community know, we've been working on updating the housing element update for the city for the sixth planning cycle. And the planning cycles are approximately every eight years. And, uh, just for background, the city did receive funding from the state through two different grant programs to help them work on the update of the housing elements. Otherwise, um, the city really wouldn't have been able to afford to do so. It's costly to do updates of these general plan elements. So that was very helpful to receive that funding from the state. Um, so it's, in September of twenty twenty-three, uh, we got to what we consider to be a final draft of this that could be taken through the adoption process, and it was reviewed by, uh, the Department of Housing and Community Development. And for those who aren't aware, that is the state agency that's in charge of implementing state housing law and enforcing state housing law. And they're the ones who you have to submit your housing element update to, and they have to ultimately certify it after it's adopted. In September of twenty twenty-three, essentially what we did is we provided them a draft for them to say, um, yeah, this looks good. This meets state housing law. And that's essentially what they said, but they had an exception. They said, this does, but there's a program in here, Program fourteen related to, uh, creation of a multi-family combining zone and its application to a property in the city. And they said, you know, take this through, adopt it, but we're not going to certify until you implement that program. So that's what their, their letter said. So once we received that determination from H C D, we started on the CEQA process. And that started with preparing what's called an initial study. And that's the documents you have that's attached, um, you know, to the staff report. And so, uh, we completed an initial study and made a recommendation of negative declaration, because as outlined in the document, uh, we didn't see the potential for any significant effects on the environment from adoption of the housing element update. And understand that, uh, these type of general plan updates, it's a plan level review. You know, you're not doing, uh, a project specific review. You're not looking at individual development projects and trying to determine their impacts. You're looking at essentially what's proposed in the housing element update. And really, the project description for the purposes of CEQA is all those programs. What the city's committing to doing, that's the project description that's being analyzed in the CEQA document. So any future development that may occur in the city is not part of the project description of this housing element update. And for that reason, uh, many jurisdictions do, uh, determination of negative declaration. That's fairly common. Um, look at, uh, the other jurisdictions in Humboldt County, what they did for CEQA during the sixth cycle. Uh, many of them, um, adopted negative declarations as well. Those that have older general plans and older general plan E I Rs, they did what we're proposing here, an initial study and a negative declaration determination. The folks that, their jurisdictions that have newer general plans like Eureka and Humboldt County, they have newer E I Rs. They're able to tear off of that, and they did what are called addendums to those E I Rs. Which essentially say, we've already planned for this. There's no need to do any further CEQA analysis. And it's really more of like a section in the staff report versus a CEQA document that gets circulated for public comment like this initial study negative declaration. So that's just a little bit of background on how other jurisdictions have, have done this, uh, during this planning cycle. So this is definitely the type of analysis that gets done for a housing element update. Um, so just a little background on the CEQA process, um, after completing a draft, these documents have to be sent to the state clearinghouse, and they're the entity whose job is to send it out to all the state agencies for review. Uh, we also post it, um, post a notice of intent to adopt a negative declaration at the county clerk recorder's office. Uh, there's also notices posted in the community and the usual public places that they do posting, letting people know that this document's available. So that thirty day circulation period or comment period for agencies in the public began on September twenty-sixth and ended on October twenty-seven. And I should note that, um, there's nothing that precludes folks from providing comments outside of that period. It's just an attempt to pull in as many comments as possible during what they call a circulation period. In a lot of ways, it's meant for state agencies to be aware of what the city's proposing, but, um, public comment can be received and should be considered up to the point at which the city council would make a decision to, uh, adopt the housing element update. So, um, just a little background there as well. Um, also, uh, as, you know, as typical, uh, the CEQA document was posted on the city's website prior to the beginning of the circulation period so that it was available for the public to review, and the notices that went out had the link, uh, to the city's website. So we did receive some comments on this document during its circulation period and some after. Um, several were received today, and they were, uh, presented to you, those comments there. The ones that were received before we put the packets together, I included, uh, in the packet, uh, for this item. And I have responses, ones to, uh, the water board and one is to a member of the public. So that's basically what you have in your packet. You have the CEQA negative declaration, initial study negative declaration. You had the comments received prior to the packet going out, and we've obviously presented you the other comments that have come in since then. Um, so as far as next steps in the adoption process, obviously we'll have this meeting. You'll take public comment, ask questions of staff. But it's proposed that a public hearing would be scheduled at the, uh, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four planning commission meeting. And at that meeting, you would be considering making a recommendation to the city council on the CEQA determination and, uh, whether to adopt the housing element update. And then, it's proposed for a public hearing to be scheduled before the city council on December tenth. Um, and at that, uh, meeting, they would receive the recommendation from the planning commission. And they would consider adoption of the CEQA determination and the housing element update. So that, uh, that concludes my staff report, and I recommend the, oh, the, open the item for public comment.
Great, thank you. With that, let's open it for public comments. Um, let's go here in person first. Um, yeah, come on up.
Hello, my name is Lisa Hoover, and I had the written comments that unfortunately I just got around to sending them in today for the meeting, so the copies I saw there, but, um, this, and the summary table in the housing element update twenty twenty-four document includes environmental factors such as biological resources, geology soils, hazardous materials, transportation, traffic, um, that are potentially affected. Um, and it indicates that all impacts are less than significant. And that's what Gary was saying, oh, less than significant. Yet the evaluation of less than significant applied to all environmental factors is not in keeping with components of the housing element update or the biological resources document, it's a biological resources assessment of twenty twenty-three. And that applies mainly to the Taylor Way developments. Um, and that identifies mitigations that should be identified as a condition of approval. And again, that's from the biological resource assessment. Page fifty-eight, and there are two examples I'm just going to give. I'm not going to read my whole letter, but page fifty-eight of the housing element update states, future residential development may have the potential to result in significant impacts to spe- special status species and sensitive natural communities such as riparian habitat and fairly protected wetlands. And number two, based on the results of the site-specific analysis and where appropriate, that federal and state agencies will require mitigation for project-level impacts. And none of the tables in the housing element update that summarize potential environmental effects was a determination made consistent with, quote, "the potential to result in significant impacts" that was documented earlier in the document. Why wasn't the determination option "less than significant with mitigation incorporated" applied? That's one of the options, to a particular action when mitigations will be needed. The need for mitigations is also supported in the biological assessment for Taylor Way developments. The document states that recommendations to reduce potential direct and indirect adverse effects be included as a condition of approval of the project. Um, an example is for potential indirect effects on water resources, streams and associated riparian habitats and riverine systems such as compromising surface water quality by sediment transport from disturbed soils or disturbed by release of hazardous materials as a result of construction. This is an example of environmental effects that were assigned a less than significant determination in the housing element update when they actually need mitigations incorporated to reduce negative impacts and should be documented as, documented as such. Another environmental factor, the housing element update relates to direct and indirect effects of proposed housing element titled "population and housing." This factor could apply to any future growth such as new homes and businesses, including recreational development. Specifically, the cumulative effects of foreseeable future actions that may affect roads, traffic, ingress, egress, and to and out of town. The housing element states that the item is less than significant, but this is not substantiated, nor has the circulation element of the general plan been updated since nineteen eighty-six. I would ask that the planning commission and planning staff revisit these elements of the housing element and pause on the intent to adopt a negative declaration until the less than significant determinations are better substantiated or changed to include text related to the need for mitigations. I would also ask for a pause on adoption in light of residential business developments currently discussed by the city. Such developments will have cumulative effects on population and housing and circulation. Related to the need to update the circulation element of the, the general plan to factor in.
I'm sorry, and I know we got your comments, and so this is just a discussion item only.
No, it's okay. It's, yeah, I just highlighted some things that were in the document.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment, and I apologize I didn't give the thirty-second warning. So I will be watching the clock and be sure to give everyone a thirty-second warning, so. So, yeah, no problem. Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else in person that wanted to provide, um, public testimony on this agenda? Nobody? We've got one on Zoom, but I wanted to give everyone in person the chance first. Nope. Okay, Julie, we're on to you on Zoom.
I'm crossing my fingers. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. Your three minutes is starting.
Thank you so much. Um, Lisa, thank you. She's been a, such an amazing advocate for our community with her knowledge of taking time and doing research. And I really hope the commission, and thank you guys so much for letting her have that little extra time, since it sounds like it's me and her only speaking. Um, please dive into all, all, all the information Lisa's providing. She's not one voice. If you go back like I was requesting prior in public comment that our commissioners review, that's why I also made the comment in minutes. I'm sorry. Um, it's important to hear what the public has said prior. Thank you, Justin. Thank you so much. Um, now, we had a gap of time between Access Humble uploads and Justin coming on. We have meetings that are not recorded, a lot of actions taken, and you guys are rolling on those now. Um, the housing element is something I dove into years back as well. And I agree with Lisa with our consistency of the general plan, and we have not really consolidated a good, um, community gathering about our housing element. Most of our town halls are just another kind of, this is what we're doing. Um, and I really feel that we do need to get the reins back, commission, and, um, review our general plan, review this housing element, get proper, um, community input. Thank you, Gary, for being honest that the time to send in that was most appropriate has passed, and now we're in discussion period, yet we can still send in comment. Um, for, maybe disclose one more time so that the public knows how much longer we have to give in that comment. But in the meantime, I think coordinating another kind of place that we're not kind of rushing through, uh, quick synopsis, going straight to public comment, not hearing our commissioners, that we actually are reviewing. Our, I love our general plan. I think it's beautiful. It's been built for many generations. I support it personally. I do not want to change change our general plan. I want our housing element to be consistent with it. And I think if more people were educated on both, they would be, um, concurring with the sentiment. So thank you for your time, commissioners. I'd love to hear what you have to say.
Thank you, Julie. Uh, Jean, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, and also, uh, thank you, uh, for Lisa's, uh, information. Um, I have a concern about the, uh, circulation element also. I'd like the, uh, planning commission, uh, to review that in regards to Greenwood and the school and the traffic that is going to be created, uh, coming if we have um, a lot of, uh, building and, uh, a possible Danco, uh, development, uh, in the park and, uh, uh, the effect on Greenwood. If we could, uh, have that for maybe possible, uh, future agenda, it would really be appreciated. I have a large concern about that. Uh, I live on Greenwood. Um, thank you. I'll mute.
Okay, thanks, Jean. Um, let's just get the timer reset here, and then, um, Lori, I see you have your hand up, and you are next. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm not exactly sure if this is the right, uh, time for this question. But, um, I understand there's, uh, a by rights rezoning issue possibly coming up that, um, probably has some connection to this particular issue. And I just have, uh, I, I would like to make sure that, um, if that's an issue that comes up before this commission, when it does, um, there is a clear understanding explanation to the community as to what the by rights rezoning um, code would, would include, how it would be effective, how it would, um, affect the, the community at large. So, that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Is there anyone else on Zoom or in person here that would like to provide public comment on this agenda item? Oh, yes, go ahead. Please come up. No problem. You have three minutes.
Hi, thanks for being here, you guys. Um, as I've just begun to delve in, the amount of information you have presented before you from so many different regulatory agencies, uh, nearly incomprehensible how you could begin to put that together, especially if you're new on the commission, or maybe you haven't been following it. Um, with that said, I, I, I would like to sort of piggyback on both what Lisa has said and, and, uh, Jean has said that looking at that circulation, uh, aspect of it, the impact that looking at that circulation aspect of it, the impacts on our roads, not just today or for a moment, but the longer implications of this. And so in as much as you have time, and I know this is, you have jobs, you have lives, you have families. The impacts of your decisions today, I hope that you will be able to make the time to educate yourself in as much as possible on these and the impacts on all individuals in Blue Lake. I appreciate whatever time you can give to this, and it's not something that has to be rushed. So as best you can, learn as much as you can, and good luck.
Thank you. All right. Last call for public comment, and then we'll, before we go back up here to the commission for discussion and questions, seeing none, we will close public comment. And yeah, do you all have questions and thoughts and things you'd like to discuss, questions you'd like to ask of city staff?
I am playing catch-up at this point, so.
Yes, totally.
Give me some time.
Yeah, no problem. I do have a couple of questions. If nobody else has any, we can get started. So Gary, I'm wondering if you could explain a little bit, I think you touched on it in your staff report, but if you could explain to people sort of the difference between this plan-level programmatic SEQA documentation and the project-level environmental review that would happen when an actual project comes before the city? And if you could also explain the difference between sort of how a project might be approached right now, while we don't have this Housing Element passed, and the difference in the environmental review that would happen at the project-specific level if we did pass this? So kind of the differences in the levels of environmental review and the before and after of the Housing Element Update. I think that would be helpful for everyone.
Okay, just reading some notes.
Sure.
Remember what you asked? So yeah, you're right. I did touch on it a little bit, explaining plan level versus project level. So plan level, you'll see, like, for example, Table Four kind of goes through each one of these programs. That is the project description. So it goes through, and I mean, some of these are like, well, post-notices about fair housing. Obviously, there's not going to be any impact on the environment from doing that or physical impacts. There's other things like this by-right zoning, which proposes to create basically a new zoning tool that is a combining zone that could be overlaid on top of a property. And the purpose of it is to allow a by-right multifamily development at a certain density prescribed by the state. So that's just example of two, one where there's clearly no impact and one where, you know, we would be doing zoning code amendments. But just kind of back up a little bit too, I mean, let's look at what this element does. You know, what it does first and foremost is it says, this is the regional housing needs assessment allocation the state has given the city of Blue Lake. We're analyzing thirty-four units in here. And here are the vacant sites in the city that are already zoned for residential development where we believe that residential development could happen. That's one of the biggest components of this. Now, all of these programs, a lot of these are intended to bring the city into compliance with state housing law. City doesn't really have a choice. You know, they've got outdated definitions, they've got zoning that was purposely written to inhibit multifamily development, and the state called out all of these things in their review. And they said, explain to us how this doesn't inhibit multifamily development if you conclude it does and you need to amend it. So that's a lot of what you have here. And you'll note that, you know, it goes through these policies in Table Four, and it's like, you know, no physical changes would occur. Other things that are commonly stated is, you know, this would not allow new housing in areas that aren't already zoned for housing. Some of them say, you know, that by-right combining zone action would be subject to SEQA itself. You know, you wouldn't adopt the Housing Element Update and that automatically happens. No. That's a project too that has to be analyzed under SEQA. So it would also go through that process. You'd be creating this new zoning tool and then deciding where to apply it. And you'd have to consider potential impacts of the location at which you would provide it. So that's probably the one implementation program that I touched on more than others because the others clearly just don't have a potential for environmental impact. So to go back to, you know, the initial question, plan level versus project level. So you're really just looking at a plan that says, here's where our housing can go, and here's some amendments we're making to achieve compliance with state housing law. And when analyzing that in an initial study, there's very little potential for impact because you're not approving any specific projects. This itself will not result in any development. Those things could happen later under the zoning that allows it. And at that point is when project-specific environmental review would occur. Now, there was mention of a Biological Resources Assessment in some of the comments. That document was done for the Danko Project. That document was done to analyze the project-specific impacts of biological resources from the Danko Project. So that's the kind of thing you do at project-level review. You say, okay, we have this site, they're proposing this type of project. What technical studies do we need based on the baseline conditions and the site conditions? Do we need a cultural resources report? Do we need a biological resources assessment? Do we need a geotechnical report? Do we need a traffic study? That's the point at which you do those things, not at this plan level. And that's why you see the other jurisdictions and jurisdictions throughout the state doing initial studies and negative declarations for housing element updates because they're doing a plan-level environmental review. They're not analyzing specific projects. If anything, what they're analyzing is zoning code amendments that will occur and are proposed in these programs. That's the project description here. So I did include information in the analysis in this plan-level environmental review, really for backgrounds of existing conditions, baseline conditions, to disclose and acknowledge that some of these sites may have environmental constraints. They could have wetlands, they could be near a creek, et cetera. And that will be dealt with through the project-specific environmental review as it is for the Danko Project that's proposed in the Powers Creek District. That wasn't intended to be project-specific environmental review for the purposes of this element. It was really, I was just trying to help people understand, like, here's the existing conditions related to these resource categories, whether it be biological resources or cultural resources or hydrology and water quality or that type of thing. So you see that throughout this document where I attempted to do that so people had a better understanding of how that later project-specific environmental review would happen. So hopefully that answers your question about plan level versus project level. Now, when you get to project level, for example, based on the initial study work we've done so far in the Danko Project, that looks to be a mitigated negative declaration because some of those technical studies prepare, recommend mitigation measures, nesting bird surveys, aquatic species surveys, you know, dust control measures, a whole variety of things that would be mitigation, and that's why it'd be appropriate to do a determination of mitigated negative declaration for that project-specific environmental review. So hopefully that makes sense. Now, as far as before and after the Housing Element Update, again, other than that combining zone, you've got all these properties that are already zoned to allow residential development subject to certain density requirements and certain development standards. Those projects could be approved today if the findings can be made. So after the Housing Element Update, we'll have to work on implementing all of these things. And really, once that's done, we'll have rules that are more consistent with state housing law, and it'll be more clear to people how to comply with state housing law when proposing different residential development projects. Right now, what we're often having to do is make sure we're up to speed on state housing law so that when we review residential development projects, we're following the law because the city's code is outdated. It has been for many years. I mean, this has been a conscious choice by past councils to not try and get a certified housing element. At least, I think, the last two cycles. I think they adopted the one in the fourth cycle. It couldn't get certified because they wouldn't commit to certain things. Prepared a draft in the fifth cycle, but it didn't comply with state housing law. And HCD has gotten a lot more strict in being punitive on jurisdictions for abusive discretion on reviewing development projects, on not being willing to achieve compliance with state housing laws through their housing element updates. They have sued jurisdictions, Out Grove, on a project-specific basis, the city of Huntington Beach on their housing element update. So the consequences have gotten more strict over time or more severe over time. Other consequences of not achieving compliance with state housing law is loss of local control. You know, we've probably seen this through ADU laws and things like that where they've said, no, you have to allow this with like no, you know, discretionary review locally. If you don't achieve compliance with state housing law through a certified housing element, those consequences become greater. In some circumstances, folks can take advantage of laws like the Housing Accountability Act. There's various remedies that people can use to get a project through, even if the community doesn't want it because state law would ultimately supersede local law in some of those cases. Other consequences are loss of funding. You know, there's a lot of funding sources the city relies on that are tied to having a certified housing element. So just to be clear, after the Housing Element is updated, we'll be doing zoning code amendments to make sure that we are in current compliance with state housing law. And that will have some effect on future development, just in essence, to make sure that it follows state law and current requirements. That's really the difference. Not having this adopted is not preventing any of these projects from being reviewed and approved. And if the city attempted to say that, well, we don't have, you know, an adopted and certified housing element, I think the state would disagree if the city tried to deny projects, for example, saying that's the reason. Or, for example, the idea that there's parts of the general plan besides a housing element that need to be updated. That may be, but that zoning already exists. Private property rights are a real thing, and it could be considered an abuse of discretion to say, we're not going to approve your project because we have some amendments we need to do to our general plan. I'm sure there's private property owners in the city that would understand that. So anyway, a little bit of background there. Hopefully that answered your question.
Yeah, that's helpful. And can you talk about the project-specific environmental review that would still occur sort of regardless of whether or not the Housing Element has determined to not have, these policy changes have been determined to not have an impact, the project-level environmental review that still occurs?
Yeah. So if a project needs a discretionary review from the city, it could be like a conditional use permit is the most common type. That triggers SEQA, and you have to do a SEQA determination in order to approve that conditional use permit. And typically, you start with saying, okay, is this exempt under any of the categorical or statutory exemptions under state law? If you can't find it to be exempt, then you prepare an initial study. And through the initial study process and all the technical studies that are prepared, you determine the appropriate level or, what I should say, the appropriate SEQA determination. It's not common for project-specific review to arrive at a negative declaration. That's more plan-level review. So oftentimes, if you're going to do an initial study, you end up with a mitigated negative declaration because you do have mitigation measures that need to be implemented to reduce impacts of less than significant for that specific development project.
Great. So that type of project-specific environmental review is still occurring?
And if I could just add, there was a question kind of about how this combining zone would work.
Right.
So if you apply that combining zone and it's by right, realize that there's still state and federal and potentially local regulations that protect a variety of these resources. Biological resources, aquatic resources are a good example. Just because it only requires a building permit doesn't mean we ignore a giant wetland in the middle of the property.
Sure.
You can still have federal regulations you have to follow. You still have state regulations you have to follow under the Clean Water Act that are implemented by the Army Corps and the Water Board. So it's on staff to make sure through the building permit referral process that they're looking, you know, in detail at these sites and any potential constraints they may have. It may be appropriate to send referrals out to various regulatory agencies and say, here's what's proposed. We think there's some environmental issues on the property. Please provide comments and recommendations, things like that. I've done that here in the city of Blue Lake. It's very commonly done in Humboldt County. Just because something only needs a building permit, again, doesn't mean you ignore all the other regulations that apply to development of that property. It's really on the staff at the local level reviewing it to make sure they catch those things and refer it out to the appropriate agencies. So that would be in the case of no discretionary review by the city and only a ministerial permit, like a building permit.
Great. Thank you. That was really helpful. Yeah, go ahead.
So it looks like this goes to twenty twenty-seven. So that certification goes like through the end of twenty twenty-seven?
Something like that.
Something like that. And so do we have to adopt another one, like some point in the next? You know, when do we start the process for the next cycle?
Every eight years.
Every eight years.
You know, ideally, they're going to continue making funding available to smaller jurisdictions like the city of Blue Lake because, you know, we, the city got sixty-five thousand dollars to update its housing element update. That's a big deal, the city of Blue Lake and other smaller jurisdictions like it. So if there're going to be unfunded mandates where there's really no ability for the city to afford to do it, that's tough. And it's also one of the reasons that the last two cycles, they haven't had a certified housing element. It was also, you know, a financing thing too.
To ask regarding that, what specific dates are we up against? Like, what are the deadlines and benchmarks coming up for this adoption?
Yeah, so if you look in here, you've got some dates for when these programs are supposed to implement, and some of them are coming up. You know, and the way the state looks at it, it's like, all right, you missed that, so, you know, tell us when you're going to get these things done. They need to happen quickly. So some of these, there's dates of December twenty twenty-four, and you do your best at the time you draft these things to try and project out when you're going to do it. The state pushes on you to include dates that are sooner than later and things like that. So every year, we have to do annual progress reports to the state where we say, here's our housing element. Here's all these programs that are in there, and here's where we are with implementing those programs. And they review that, and if they have concerns that you're way behind, they'll, they'll let you know. They'll, they'll write to you and say, look, you need to implement these things soon. There is a timeline under this, this state law or, you know, something to that effect. But anyway, that's, that's really kind of the timelines we're, we're under. There's also projects such as the Danko Project, which wants to get certain funding through the state for its affordable housing project. And its ability to get that is limited if you don't have a certified housing element. So there's definitely consequences to being able to do the development of housing for all income levels if you don't get a certified housing.
Are there any other questions? Things we'd like to discuss? This is a discussion item only. So it's a chance to ask questions of city staff and talk amongst ourselves if there's any more information we'd like them to bring back for the next time when we have a public hearing. Now would be a good time to ask any clarifying questions. Okay. All right.
Before we move on, I will point out that there will be some minor revisions that we make based on public comment because it appears that there were things that may or not have been clear or stuff like that. So just to help people have a better understanding. And also, we received comments from the Water Board, as you may have seen, where they pointed out, well, you know, these sites aren't necessarily fully cleaned up for the purpose of developing for residential. And I responded back to them. I said, none of the vacant sites that we're identifying for residential development are under the oversight or authority of the Water Board because we're not proposing residential development on leaking underground stores, tank sites that have been cleaned up. Those sites are more difficult to deal with, and most of them in the city already have development on them. So we don't have vacant sites in that condition that are under the oversight of the Water Board. So I will probably add some clarifying language to the hazards and hazardous materials section to make that clear.
I'm just still trying to clarify the timeline being, so it's like, we're like three quarters of the way through this cycle, essentially.
We're behind.
We're behind. So if we adopt it, that gives us two years. At what point do we start the process for the next one so we're on time? So we're like in the flow of eight years, you know?
Yeah.
And secondly, sorry, does, does this set us up for that next cycle pretty well? Or are there things that we should, I know you can see the future, but yeah.
Well, sure. I mean, it definitely sets us up for the next cycle because if we fail to have a certified element, it's punitive in that they make you carry the allocated units over the next cycle. That's why I remember it's thirty-four, not twenty-three.
Gotcha.
Because we had to carry eleven overs. So there's consequences to not getting certified. The, the process essentially, right before the next planning cycle, the Department of Housing Community Development and HCOG, you know, Humboldt County Association of Governance, are going to be working together on coming up with the next arena allocation. So that's important for us to review because that's, we have to look at the methodology that they're using. Sorry, I'm talking to. We have to look at the methodology that they're using to make sure we don't think it's out of whack. My understanding is that the allocations are only going to go up over time because the need for housing is greater than previously anticipated. So we had eleven coming out of the last recession, twenty-three for this cycle. It most likely will be more in the next cycle, even for. It most likely will be more in the next cycle, uh even for a community like Blue Lake. So that's the first step we can get involved in is before they come out with the regional housing needs allocation report. We're involved in that process of reviewing the data, the assumptions, they're looking at employment and population growth and all these various things to determine how many units to allocate. Some of the jurisdictions that get really large uh arena allocations pay very close attention to that. Because that can be a difference of hundreds of units that they have to plan for. Arcata, Yarug, Humboldt County pay very close attention. Um, we obviously pay attention as well and that'll probably be the first step. And the city has some monies under our existing contract for us to participate in those, you know, more kind of minor processes. When it comes down to writing a whole new housing element, that costs tens of thousands of dollars to do. Now, having one that's more updated, more current state housing law, that's just less work. We essentially just deal with the new re-allocation and whatever laws have changed that we need to adapt to uh since we last adopted one. So it'll put us definitely in a much better position than we've been in for fifteen, twenty years, honestly.
Thank you.
And I do wonder if it would be helpful, um, for the benefit of new commissioners and the public, um, just to sort of back up a little bit and, and talk a little bit about the state's philosophy on why there, this is part of like sort of a multi-pronged approach to increase the accessibility of housing. And I think one thing uh most of us hopefully can agree on is that everyone should have housing and a place to live. Um, however, the state has recognized, my understanding is that the state has recognized that some policies that especially smaller towns like ours have are exclusionary and are discriminatory and mean that even though we have it zoned for residential or we have it zoned for multifamily, there are reasons in our policies that those units are not being built. And we do not have enough affordable housing or even regular market housing to meet the needs of our population. And so, um, if there's anything you guys could do to expand on that a little bit, just so people kind of understand where we are and that we're trying to provide a place to live like we all enjoy, um, for everyone that wants to live here. Obviously within reason and within the environmental constraints of certain pieces of property and within the character of our town. Um, but you know, we can't be discriminatory and exclusionary in how we get to choose who lives here or what color their house is painted, for example. Um, and so just to sort of back up a little bit about the state's approach and sort of why they're pushing um us to implement policies like this that reduce discrimination. If there's anything else you want to comment on that.
Sure. That was a, a really good point. Um, when I pointed out that we're trying to identify vacant sites where this stuff can happen, the other part to that is uh that there's reasonable zoning and development standards that that development will be subject to. So a lot of the analysis we had to do, they, they went through our code in depth and said, okay, this zone has this language which potentially could inhibit uh multifamily development. They also noted that we had inconsistency in how multifamily development was treated in zones that allowed fairly similar types of residential development. For example, our planned development residential here on the west side of town where most of the residential development used to be before the Powers Creek District was really written, there's this force city, even though multifamily is allowed, it was kind of written to force it to be more single family in nature. And they say, say, well, if you're going to claim that's where most of your residential development potential is, you can't have stuff that inhibits multifamily development like that. Um, and, and you're right. I mean, that's some of the reasons that more multifamily development hasn't happened in the city. It's always been allowed. Um, up, you know, one unit per two thousand square feet is the densest that the city's allowed for decades now. Up to forty five feet in height is the maximum height that the city's allowed for decades now. It's always been allowed. The reason it happened, uh, or didn't happen, I should say, is a, a lot of things. I mean, some of the local developers preferred to do fourplexes. That was just a housing type that made sense for them and made them money. And that's what they knew. You know, you have developers now, they're doing more of the multifamily stuff and then that's now made its way to Blue Lake. Um, and the state wants to make sure that we don't have rules and inhibit that from happening. Um, one good example of changes that we need to make is our site plan approval process. It has principles to be followed that are highly subjective. And that's against state law. You can't have things that say, is it compatible with the neighborhood? Because that allows subjectivity and determining, is it? That, that could differ. People have different opinions on that. What the state wants, and I identify this in the element, is they want objective standards that don't allow any discretion like that, where you're bringing your opinion or your personal feelings into the decision-making process. So we will be required to revise those principles to be followed to be objective standards that are clear, concise, knowable. Developers understand what they're getting into and then they're not going to go to a hearing where somebody says, I don't like the color. I don't like, you know, this particular design, things of that nature. So um, that's a, a pretty good example. A lot of jurisdictions are having to change what were subjective development standards to now objective development standards. And Blue Lake is in that boat.
Great. Thank you for that. Anything else from my fellow commissioners? I see we have a couple of hands up on Zoom. We, we technically have closed public comment, but um I'll give you guys a chance to speak, um, now that we've all gone. Um, can we get the timer ready? Great. All right, Julie, go ahead.
In appreciation of you guys letting us chime back in, my only comments are please, next time. Gary, you insinuated to the commission two different times prior to opening it. Um, I don't, to let public speak first, I don't commend that. I think in the, in, in the future, please open it up to our commissioners, then open it up to our public. And I'll leave it at that. And no, we are not going to be CEQA exempt on projects. The state needs to give Danco money for this project and we need to update our housing element. Thank you for disclosing that. That needs further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Um, next I see Lori, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I, I also thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Again, I would um like to see uh public education and input when it comes to um the zoning concerns. Um, the by, by rights, uh rezoning issue is very uh questionable to me and I would love to hear more definition of that and exactly what that means in respect to um the areas in Blue Lake, um, other than the opportunity zones. Um, I just feel like more public education would benefit not only this commission, but the city council. Um, so that people understand uh what the thinking is. And I, I think this is a huge issue um, that is, is probably a more responsibility than this commission um, needs to have as a whole. Um, so I think that the education component is, is more than valuable to the residents, um, so that we're all on the same page. We understand things. And it's not possible for everybody to um attend meetings or get on Zoom. Um, but I think this um, this whole housing element, I know has been discussed and, and people feel like it's been presented. Uh, but not everyone understands it and possibly a um, some kind of meeting with the residents for uh clarification, understanding, questions, that type of thing would probably, because we're so small, would be a, a benefit not only to the commission, but to the council, to the city planner and, and to the residents. So thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. Jean, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, in the project specific uh area, I, I understand um, if I'm understanding this correctly, it's at that point when this is being discussed by the planning commission, um, they would uh then hold a hearing um for the public to um answer any questions on, on a development that is a project specific. Um, and find out what the desires are of the uh, of the citizens in Blue Lake. That, that's my understanding, if I'm correct. But another comment I wanted to make, and I just heard this and I was interested in it, um, is uh on a different subject, which is um, the, the housing stock in Blue Lake. And um, I was wondering about vacation homes and the effect on the housing, if um, that is good.
Oh, Jean, you just accidentally muted. It looks like right in the middle of the sentence about the effect of vacation rentals. There we go.
Got it.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So I was wondering if that is going to be discussed at some point because we are um seeing our housing um econo- economically being used um as vacation rentals. Um, and I was just wondering about the effect. So that was it. And uh, thank you for listening.
Great. Thanks for your comment, Jean. All right. Oh, yeah, go ahead. Here, um, no, no, there was nobody else. It was just you. Go ahead. Oh, well, I don't, I don't mean it like that.
Uh, I just want to say you guys have a lot to digest. There are some new members here. Um, I highly recommend you guys, you know, take all this in, digest it, review it. Don't make any quick decisions. There's some people who tend to, who can make a lot of money from this. So just take the time and process everything and review it. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for your comment. Oh, yeah, sure. Elise, come on up.
Good evening. My name's Elise Kefani. Um, as many of you know, I am on the city council, but I want to be very, very clear that I'm not speaking for the city council at this moment. Um, at previous meetings when we discussed uh the housing element, there were numerous requests for a town hall meeting to discuss and learn about the housing element. And so I, I believe a pre- at a previous meeting, the commission did, did state that the, that would be a recommendation to the council. And that hasn't happened yet. So I'm hoping that that recommendation could still come forward and um, and that that community meeting where we can do questions and answers where we're not bound by uh protocol, um, that that meeting can still happen. So folks can get a better understanding of, of all the bits and parts and moving pieces of this housing element and the implications and, and uh basically we can all get educated and go forward um in a more uh understanding light. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comment. All right. We're going to close the second round of public comment here. Um, and back to the commission. Was there anything else? Any other questions that we had for staff or any other direction that we would like to give? Um, Gary, so next steps on this is that there will be a public hearing?
Yeah, as identified in the staff report.
Great.
We're proposing for a public hearing to be scheduled for your regularly scheduled uh November meeting on November eighteenth.
Okay.
Uh, which would be the first point at which you could consider making a recommendation to the city council.
Great.
Whether to adopt the housing element update and its uh CEQA determination that's recommended by staff. Um, and then that would be forwarded to the city council uh for a public hearing on December tenth. I guess they're not doing a meeting later in the month because it's the holiday.
Sure.
Um, and if that would be the point at which they would consider the planning commission's recommendation and that would be the first point at which they would consider adoption of the housing element update and its CEQA determination.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's helpful. And so if people have specific questions and comments and concerns about the housing element kind of between now and what, maybe two weeks from now would be a good time to get them into the city? And those would be questions that you could possibly address in your staff report at the, at the public hearing. So people have like a couple of weeks here to get some further questions in um that we could then address.
And it's important to understand the process. The planning commission um does not make the decision on
Correct.
the state recommendation to the council, who is the ultimate decision.
Right. All right. Well, this was a, a just a discussion item, so no action taken. And um we will move on to item number five, which is a discussion um presentation, a review of the city of Blue Lake housing needs video, um, fund, refund it.
And this does not have a written staff report, correct? So the city received um funding through the state, through their um REAP allocation to um, do a lot of work with our housing element, um, and to do some outreach and to look back at um, historical data of how the uh kind of history of our community and then kind of the state of our housing situation today. And they asked all jurisdictions to do a project. There were a lot of different ways that you could uh make this uh fulfill the requirements of this project. Decided to do a video. Um, we didn't really have internal capacity to do this ourselves. So working with HCOG, um, Humboldt County Association of Governments, they assisted us in going out to bid for a videographer. Um, and we hired um a local videographer, Lynette Nutter. She does a lot of local productions um to do. Kind of And so this is the kind of the final video that she put together. Uh, we wanted to show it to the commission. We'll also be showing it to the council and uploading it to our website. Um, we wanted to try to give you an opportunity to uh view it, kind of like information that's presented. And I think it's a very good job of kind of completing where we are, where we from and where we are today, especially when we, we're looking at our housing element and just how critical affordable housing is. Um, market rate housing, senior housing, um, and just kind of the status of our community. So um, Blue Lake is like every community uh nationwide and uh becoming global. Um, the need for housing is um, has just outpaced the resources and uh we're all starting to feel those effects. So we'll go ahead and start. Justin, do I need to do anything else? Cause I'm just, make it go? All right.
Blue Lake has a feel that is inviting for all the reasons that a small town is inviting.
Blue Lake is centered around the Botawat River, also known as the Mad River.
A rural community that's tucked back into the trees.
We love recreation. We're known for our sunshine, our river, arts and culture.
There is a real strong sense of community here.
The Blue Lake community is just such a wonderful gem. And I think for any family or for anyone that really enjoys being in the outdoors and really enjoys that community feel where neighbors come out and help one another. This is a wonderful place to be.
Blue Lake, it's a great place to live, but it's also a community with some struggles. I think we can overcome them. It takes dialogue. It takes acknowledgement though of really where we've come from and where we're going.
People who are coming to Blue Lake and residing here of late have been retirees.
Yes, retirees are coming here, but what keeps a town alive is young people and families, you know? And that's, that's where the, I think the big challenge is right now.
I think we are going to dry up if we don't have families move in.
It is a challenge, I think, for people to buy a house here.
Being able to bring in affordable housing into Blue Lake is
Being able to bring in affordable housing into Blue Lake is critical to fill that middle ground that our community needs.
The city used to be a lot more than what it is now, even in the short amount of time that I've been here. Businesses that I enjoyed going to are gone now.
Blue Lake traditionally has been an industrial town. We were a logging community. We had a lot of young families in the community that worked in the mills and provided a lot of economy and investment in Blue Lake. We had stores, we had markets, people circulated their dollars within our own community footprint.
We raised kids here, we had families here, but there was a lot of changes of life that happened.
The biggest change was kind of the downturn of the logging and timber industry. And that hit our community really hard.
My sense of it is mills automated. There was less people being employed and those that could move did.
A lot of those young families had to relocate to find new jobs. Those were the same people that were investing in the community, whether it was through volunteerism or recreation or just general economics. It impacted our community a lot.
Back in the sixties and seventies, when we had this larger population, we were able to sustain the type of businesses that are no longer here. This includes multiple places and nightlife. It includes a couple of places to have breakfast, lunch and dinner, which we don't have now. We're not yet back to the critical mass that can sustain these services and this commerce, these jobs.
As people moved in from out of the area, they were working out of the area, they were still shopping out of the area. And those dollars and, and that economy wasn't replaced with that loss of the industry. And as we start to see our demographics trend towards an older demographic, we're starting to really see those impacts.
We have houses that are on the market for five or $600,000. But we're, we're kind of missing that middle housing area where we have affordable quality housing that families can afford.
There's a lot of stigma when people look at affordable housing. When you look at low income or affordable housing, these are already the people that are in Blue Lake.
You don't necessarily see low income. You know, low income could be a first year teacher at a school. Low income could be your post office worker. It could be anyone.
We're not this elite community. We've always been a blue collar community. Like I said before, with the timber industry, our dads, they worked in the mills. You know, they came home with sawdust on their clothes. These are our people and we need to find a space to provide opportunity. And affordable housing is a critical part of that. If people can't afford to live in these communities, what does our community become?
Being able to own your own home or your own property is a dream. It's my own family's dream. It's a shame that we can't. And you know, even talking to my own parents, my dad has this antiquated view of what, you know, well, you just save up and you just buy a home. But it's not like that anymore, unfortunately. And even though we have two working adults in our household, two working adults isn't the same as what one working adult may have been in the 1950s. So things have changed and it's just, it's difficult.
I'm a multi-generational Blue Laker who's had the benefit of having housing handed down to me. I could not afford the house I live in now. If I had to go and buy that house, I couldn't, I could not afford to live in Blue Lake. And I think I do pretty well for myself, but this community is outpacing people like me. And I think I'm a pretty good addition to the community. I try pretty hard and try to give back and do good things, but that's where we're at. You know, if we don't do something, we're not going to, we're, we're going to lose the people that are probably our greatest value.
I think affordable housing could be something that would benefit everybody, not just families with children, but you know, even our senior struggle to make rent sometimes or afford their place.
I'm probably a paycheck away from being homeless, like most people I know. I am lucky enough to have an apartment. My rent has been raised three or four times since I've been there. And it really prevents my family from being able to live nearby. It's scary. If it goes up again, I don't want to have to raise the price of my hot dogs.
With the decrease in families, we have declining enrollment at a greater degree than maybe other schools might see it. So that definitely affects not only student population, but funding coming in the school and our ability to offer different programs.
For the school and for the city, sometimes there's a challenge in just not having enough resources here to be able to do what we know we can do.
Anytime you can get another 40 or 50 kids into a school that has the capacity for it, you're going to see a revenue bump, which means more resources for the kids, more programs for the kids and better outcomes for them as, as students. Same with coaching youth sports. Little league here is struggling to field teams, so we need kids. It's struggling to find coaches and umpires to be able to keep this league sustainable. And there's, there's other civic groups here in town too, that would benefit by having more people and younger people here.
With the aging demographics here in town, I've noticed that there's fewer people volunteering at the fire department. These things are going to disappear. I don't know what's going to happen to the volunteer fire department if we don't have the younger community going into it.
I'm a member of the volunteer fire department and it's difficult. As we see our call volumes continue to increase, we're seeing our volunteer numbers decrease.
The challenges that I see in the community are food insecurities, affordable housing, as well as public transportation. So Blue Lake is a food desert. That means there's no grocery store in town.
It's a real concern, me especially. It's looking at kind of what our future looks like. We need to have additional housing. We need to provide opportunity for people to be in our community. Blue Lake's not a gated community. We're not an elite community. We're a city and that balance of demographics is, is really critical for our success. I absolutely feel hopeful about Blue Lake. I see us moving in a very sustainable and positive direction. So one of the big projects that the city of Blue Lake is looking at is an affordable housing project. And I for one, think it's probably the most critical project that the city has and that the city can focus on.
I'm excited to see that Blue Lake is trying to increase housing here. You know, as a renter myself, it would be, it's my dream to be able to buy a house or, or some property out here. I think it's really important and critical for bringing people in. I've talked to so many families and different people who would love to live out here. There just isn't the availability.
I would love to see our Blue Lake community be able to bring in more housing, which will then bring in more businesses.
We need more businesses for people that live here to work at.
I feel really confident and really comfortable that the vision that we're putting forward for future investment does all of that.
Here in the Powers Creek district, opportunity is here. The city is bending over backwards to let growth happen.
When I first realized I wanted to start low and slow as a brick and mortar, Blue Lake made it clear that they wanted to see me succeed. Their first response was, what can we do to help you achieve your goals and in turn help our residents? And I knew right away, yeah, Blue Lake is where this is going to happen.
With what little growth we've had, it's brought nothing but positive results. And I think with the plan the city has in mind for new homes, new businesses, I think that would just spur that positive growth even more.
So the Powers Creek district has laid pretty dormant for a number of years. The city owns about 27 acres in the district that's undeveloped or is slated for redevelopment. Currently, we have some fairly large swaths of land that are open and really have been sitting ready for someone to invest for a number of years. We're seeing other property owners out here in the district that are looking to reinvest into new development. There's talks about an RV park and campground, so transitioning these old industrial sites over to something that's more recreation centric. There's talks about a sports complex possibly coming in. And just a lot of really good interest and excitement about the future of Blue Lake and the future of the Powers Creek district.
The development plan that I'm familiar with in the Powers Creek district makes the most sense to be able to accomplish the goals of the community quickly and efficiently.
There's the idea out there and the plan out there to have live work spaces. That would be incredible.
I think transitioning our thought process from just this focus on industry and manufacturing and production over to these live work environments, it really creates a more holistic and sustainable approach to development. When we look at our traditional development pattern in Blue Lake, it really was that small grocer living above his store or the manufacturer living above the retail shop. It's what Blue Lake has always been. And I think we've just kind of lost sight of that as we've started to become more of this kind of bedroom community.
I really feel like it's the best opportunity we have to provide that shot in the arm, providing the most benefit to Blue Lake.
I see a future where our school is full again. I see a future where, you know, kids are playing baseball, where we have little league teams again. Where we have more kids and families riding horses in our arena and enjoying our bike park and more people living in our community. That's what Blue Lake was always about.
Thank you. That was really fun to watch. All right. Yeah, I apologize. My voice in this thing is like. We're doing it outside and it was really windy and so I was having to like kind of yell and I was like, wow, you kind of like fixed that?
Sounded great.
No, it sounded great. Yeah, no, it was really well done. Yeah, thank you. This was discussion only. Is there like public comment on the other guests? Sure.
Hey, I always feel like I'm just this negative way, but you know what? This was to me when I came here, like input. And I felt like this was a pitch, a marketed pitch to get your attention to make a decision. I don't feel like this was something that I was prepared for at all. Like you've been saying the same thing to these pitches over and over again about how wonderful it's going to be. Okay? Does that look like Blue Lake, all that stuff down there? It doesn't to me. Affordable housing, yeah. There's got to be another way to do it. Then this big thing down there, it doesn't look a thing like it to me. That's my calling. And I've said it before, and I don't feel like the city council ever listens to me or the people with our opinion. So, talking to you.
Thank you. So anyone, yeah, you want to go? Either way, yeah, let's go in person first and then we'll go to the public comments on Zoom.
Hey, everybody. I think the video was really well made. I think that I didn't really like this was a special meeting. And I really feel like the special meeting is, was generated in order to push this project through before the end of December. Because you guys have stacked these two meetings together. Anyway, I just wanted to point that out. And I hope you guys take the time and review everything thoroughly before you make your recommendation. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in person? Nope. All right, let's go to Zoom. Julie, go ahead.
Yes, I hope you can hear me still well.
Yes, yes, we can. Go ahead.
Awesome. So HCOG that our mayor serves on, the Humboldt County Association of Governors, is who originally gifted Blue Lake our REIT funding, which is, staff, please correct me, but Rural Energy for America program. You know, when I first seen that funding coming in, I was thinking, well, that's great. It's for renewable energy, agriculture, in my opinion. And, and then it kind of disappeared. We didn't really know what was happening in it. We weren't given like direction where this funding was going. We weren't given clarification where this funding was going. And because I keep up with the rest of the county, which I think everybody should in their leisure time that they can, if not, I'm more than happy to give pointers if somebody's got something they're interested in. But the REIT funding was very literally discussed within our immediate city with how we're going to allocate it. And at the last HCOG meeting, the mayor was present and we see this presentation, she had zero comments on it. It just happened and it was gone. I was at the school board meeting and I did have to be a little offended by the meeting. And I did speak my words there to the superintendent who spoke in it, that housing was given as an excuse for our enrollment. And if you are involved with our school board, we know that's not actually the issue. We'll leave it at that. But I felt like this is something that's already circulated for months. We've already shared it as a public. It should have really went to council first and I'm glad you're seeing it. However, in the future, I think more direction should be given before we spend our grant money or more collaboration with commissions and public prior. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Next, Lori, go ahead.
Thank you. So I, I saw this video a few months ago and I, and it's very well done. No question. The, the thing that came up in my mind at that time was kind of the difference between affordable and low income housing, which I, I know we need. And then this also comment about owner occupied or owning a home. And when you look at the Danco project, it's, it's not to own. You know, it's, it's to, to offer affordable, low income housing for individuals and families. And I, I don't have any, any issues with that, about that. But I think that there, there's two different things that are, that need to be considered when we're talking about affordable housing, rental properties, owner occupied. I, I don't think we can like hit everything and do it right with just looking at meeting a housing requirement. And so I, I think, you know, I, I hope you guys enjoyed the video. I think it was really well done and I appreciate all the people that, that were involved in, in commenting because I think they were all true to their, to their heart. But, but I, I just, I, I see that there's a difference between, you know, wanting to get new families in and, and own the properties that we have. You know, I'm an older person. I haven't been here, you know, more than 35 years, but I do have a house and raise kids here. And you know, what I have, somebody might want to raise another family. And we've somewhat outgrown that. But when you're looking at trying to bring more people in and have affordable housing and low income housing, it's not what we're, it seems to be what we're growing towards in, in all aspects of housing. I don't know how you can get people to sell their homes unless they die or, or just move. But, but I, I think there's a difference between what was spoken to in the video and the reality of what we're looking at to bring more housing into Blue Lake. And, and I, I don't know if there's an easy way to get them both, but, but they're, they're two different things, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean, go ahead. You've got your hand up.
Hi. I'll lower my hand. Thank you for the video. It brought up a lot of thoughts for me. Being an older person, I own my home and I'm retired and have lived here and raised a son and, and gone through the, you know, the living process. And I own a bigger home. I'm not ready to give it up so that somebody else can have some housing. That's not to, not, I'm not interested in that. But one of the things that I think the city missed in the past was annexation for more property. If there was going to be an expansion of housing and development, that we could have, have done that in the past. And, and you can't do anything about that now. But I also have experience living and working in a business. We owned, ran a business for five years, which was a live-in business. It's, it's a very great opportunity. It was a fun lifestyle. But what killed us was inflation. And we were doing that back in 73, 74, when there was the problems with the, the gas. And everything that was combined did not help us run the business financially. And I see that now. And I see that now. I see inflation here now and I see we're moving into green energy and affordability for housing, but also follows the inflation and the affordability of everything. It isn't just the housing, everything, the lumber, the gas, the work. You can't find people that are builders now. They're they're few and far between and they have higher wages. So I think looking at it as just wanting to have more housing has has to also have the look at the inflation and the the effect that is having on housing. So that's my comment and thank you for listening.
Great. Thank you for your comment, Jean. Is there any other public comment either on Zoom or in person about the video? Yeah, go ahead.
Hi again. I appreciate the quality and the sentiment of the video. I do want to point out that as far as I can tell, almost every person who spoke there was a business owner, a small business owner here. And while it is important that we look to grow our schools, that we look to kind of expand what we can do, I would also like to see a conversation that does include the retirees, that does include the people who have been here at Blue Lake for some time. And and the reason I'm bringing this up and the reason why I bring it up about take your time and really look at these issues. You know, you can take a live frog and drop it in a pan, turn that burner on slow and bit by bit, it won't hop out, it gets cooked alive. And this is that incremental little change. And what I see here is like incrementally, we make, we make these decisions that will have far reaching consequences. And please hear me clearly, I am not against affordable housing. I was director of housing operations for Southern Mutual Health Association and we worked with descendants of plantation slaves who still lived on plantation land. And we worked for homeownership to help them build wealth in their families. I am not against any form of affordable housing. But I think when we begin to couple this, we put that frog into the pan, into some cool water and slowly boil it. I am very concerned about what this means for the larger development in Taylorway and I hope that while that is a very nicely done and polished film, please give consideration to those who weren't represented there, who want to help preserve some of the character of Blue Lake. Thanks so much.
Great. Thank you for your comment. All right, anyone else on Zoom or live in the audience? Nope. All right. Any comments from commissioners? This was just a presentation, discussion only, no action? All right, great. Moving right along, agenda item number five, we have another discussion item, a presentation from staff on the status of the regional climate action plan.
Great, thank you. So I'm not sure how familiar folks are with the regional climate action plan or climate action plans in general, but for a little background, the city did receive funding several years ago, I think 2012, from the Strategic Growth Council. It was an SGC grant and that was to pay for the city to do a greenhouse gas inventory and a climate action plan. RCEA was hired to do it. You know, it was a fun effort to be involved in. Ultimately, the city chose not to adopt the climate action plan and reduce some of the GHD reduction measures that were proposed by RCEA. So just a little background on kind of what the political sentiment was the last go around. And Blue Lake, I think the county had a draft one at the time, Arcata had a draft one from the mid 2000s. So this was kind of the first professional style cap that had been done in Humboldt County. So a few years later, as you can see from the staff reports, the jurisdictions in the county entered into a memorandum of understanding in 2019 to work on a regional cap. A lot of times the caps are just done by a single jurisdiction, you know, the city of San Francisco has its climate action plan. Marin County was one of the first that I'm aware of to do countywide cap. So that's basically the county, along with any incorporated cities, working together to develop a plan for reducing greenhouse gas emissions and working together in order to do that to meet the requirements, or I should say, the GHD reduction targets of the state. And so that's really the approach they took here was instead of each jurisdiction doing their own, it's like, let's all get together and work on it together. And initially, when they did it, each jurisdiction had its own targets in there. It was like a little mini climate action plan within the regional plan. And the measures were extremely ambitious. So they developed that draft regional climate action plan and they got money to hire a consultant, I think it was Ringcon, to do an environmental impact report. And Ringcon came in and looked at it and said, guys, we can't really show the feasibility of all these measures you've committed to in a rural county like Humboldt County. There were transportation related measures and just a variety of other things where Ringcon said, you know, we've done a number of these and we're not confident that we can justify these things could even be done. So they basically said to Humboldt County and the rest of the jurisdictions, instead of using the money you've got to prepare the EIR, which we don't think we can do it this time, why don't we use that money to rewrite the cap to something that's realistic and actually be achieved? Because one of the purposes of doing a cap in general is to help streamline CEQA. So if you do a climate action plan and you have a whole host of GHD reduction measures, if a project can show that they're doing all of those, then when you go to do the greenhouse gas emissions analysis in a CEQA document, you can say, we are, we are consistent with the cap, less insignificant. That's one of the big benefits of doing this. And what they call it when you achieve that status is a qualified cap. And in order to show over time that you're maintaining your qualified cap, staff has to be hired and there's work that's done at the local jurisdictions to monitor the reductions that happen over time to show that they're on the trajectory that was planned in the cap and that those reductions are consistent with the state GHD reduction targets. Right now, the target that the cap is planning for is, I believe, 40% below 1990 levels by 2030. Once we get to 2030, then they'll have another more aggressive target that they'll be going for, but that's what we have right now. And it's important to point out that the cap will benefit jurisdictions in the county that have bigger projects. That's one of the biggest benefits for Arcata, Eureka, Humboldt County, they're going to see the big housing projects or just bigger projects in general, being able to show that you're consistent with this cap and being able to streamline GHD analysis would be a big benefit. It's often one of the areas that's most challenged when people want to oppose a project, they go after greenhouse gas emissions. So that's the reason jurisdictions are doing this in addition to wanting to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. I mean, obviously, that's probably first and foremost is the desire to have less of an impact on the globe, the environment through reducing GHD emissions. If you review through this, you're going to see that the overwhelming majority of greenhouse gas emissions are from vehicle emissions. So in a rural area like this, people have to drive a lot, transit's not great, alternative modes, ped bike facilities are somewhat limited. So your your vehicle emissions are quite high. And one of the problems is that we have a limited ability to deal with that. We don't have, you know, subways or extensive mass transit systems that can be used by folks to reduce GHD emissions. If you look at figure one in the staff report, you know, building natural gas is the second most significant and then off road equipment, which would be, you know, through construction, things like that. And then it goes down from there where solid waste, heating fuel, building electricity, wastewater, 2% or less of the overall emissions generated. So in the staff reports, table one and table two show you kind of the GHD reduction strategies in table one, whether, I guess, the cornerstone one is developing a regional climate coalition because we'll all have to work together to actually achieve this stuff. And then building energy, transportation, wastewater, wastewater, carbon sequestration are the the big strategies. And then there's a whole host of GHD reduction measures with, say, they've attempted to quantify that if achieved, I think they believe that we would be able to obtain a qualified cap. So some of the other milestones that they've achieved, they put out a notice of preparation, NOP, to obtain comments. That's the beginning of kind of the EIR process under CEQA. And they were accepting comments until September 30th. They've put out a public draft of this document back in July, which has been reviewed by the various jurisdictions. But in order to get to the point of adopting this, they're going to have to go through the EIR process, take comments, respond to comments. And at this point, they're anticipating publishing that environmental impact report in February of 2025. That would have a comment appearing running through late March and then the earliest I think they could adopt the EIR and the cap would be in late June 2025. So that's kind of where things are at at this point. There is a lot of information here for you to review if you're interested. You've got basically an executive summary that was prepared probably by Humboldt County, I believe, presented to the board of supervisors. You've got the public draft of the cap. And then there's also at the end, a presentation that was given to the county board of supervisors. The county is definitely in the lead on generating a lot of this material and the various jurisdictions are kind of advisory and review role and things like that. Ultimately, they want all the jurisdictions in the county to adopt this and commit to it, which includes paying for the staff that would be hired to monitor cap compliance over time to, they'd have to do updated greenhouse gas inventories, say, okay, the base inventory we did for this cap said this, where are we at now a few years later? And that's at the point at which you would monitor, are we on the trajectory to stay consistent with state GHD reduction targets? Are we maintaining our status as a qualified cap that has CEQA streamlining benefits, that kind of thing? If they're unable to achieve a qualified cap, then you lose the CEQA streamlining and each development project would have to do its own quantitative greenhouse gas emissions analysis. That includes using modeling software to determine the number of metric tons per year that would be generated through construction or operation of project and compare that to various thresholds. Mitigations may be required to, you know, reduce and reduce the GHD emissions from the project, you know, things like that. So that would be the consequence of not achieving that qualified cap is everybody has to analyze GHD emissions on a project specific basis versus being able to say, I'm consistent with the cap, less significant. So anyways, that's a bit of background information. And that's includes my staff report. As usual, I recommend that you open the item up for public comment.
Great. Thanks, Gary. Is there anyone wanting to provide public comment on this agenda item? There's nobody left here in person, but I do see Julie on Zoom. Go ahead.
I really commend you guys. I'm still at my farm whipping butt. I just, I actually appreciate that this wasn't on Monday. I was out in the wilderness and wouldn't have been able to attend. I was hoping John Ford could have been in the house. I've listened to the presentation several times now. Thank you, Gary, for yours. It's very specific to what we need to streamline in our town if we adopt. But John, if you guys as a commission have any questions or more clarification, you just want to see this presentation again or the public that gets to see this recording later, go to access Humboldt. Like Gary said, supervisors did have a presentation as well as Eureka and Arcata city councils. John Ford gave those and a PowerPoint to their council, not their planning. And perhaps this is something that John, time wise, can come back before comment period's over. I know there's nobody in the house, but I was one of the only Blue Lake residents that did give comment at supervisors and they did have another one at the Adorni Center during the electoral debate, which was kind of poorly attended. The only thing that I thought was really not cool was that all the comments that were taken during those two limited public session times for this time action thing so far, they weren't added into the draft that we can still add comments. So for everybody that would want to add comments, you need to write them in. Otherwise, from my understanding so far, they're not going to be added. But you guys, we've got to use common sense. Taylorway, I did mention yours back. That's a great spot for renewable energy for our community. If that power grid ever wipes out, I don't know what to say, but the food bank already said we're out of food in very limited time. Like whatever we can do as a planning commission, I don't really support this climate action plan. The county we adopted it from had a lot of litigation afterwards. Those are John's words. However, we ourselves can implement things that keep us infrastructurally sound in times of need for renewable energy. I think the more multi-grids we have, the more power to us. So keep that in mind. Time is short. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Is there anyone else on Zoom that wanted to provide public comment on the climate action plan? All right, seeing none. Back to the commissioners. Comments, questions for staff? None, okay. So I see that we're kind of already doing a lot of these strategies. I see a lot of cohesion even with like some of our housing policies that we're talking about in terms of shifting to a more, you know, some a live work environment where people can walk and bike easier. And I know HCOG's doing a lot with public transit and micro transit. So I see that we're, oh, and even improvements in equipment to our wastewater treatment plant and water, water tank replacement and just sort of other things that the city has going on that seem to already align really well with these strategies. But I'm hearing that there's this whole like very technical quantification process that has to happen where we would need a dedicated staff person. Is that estimated to be a 1.0 full FTE, full time position? Or what what are the implications on staffing? I don't know, Mandy, if that's something you can address, like what are we talking about in terms of staff needed to monitor?
So that wouldn't be staff here.
Oh, good. Okay. I see.
Somebody that is paid by all the jurisdictions.
Oh, great.
Yeah, I forget what they call like a cap program specialist or I don't know.
Okay, so it's like one person for the whole county to kind of quantify.
Normally, they kind of prorate it based upon your population.
Oh, great.
So we do this right now, we're doing this with HWMA.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Stuff. So our allocation, our contribution would probably be pretty small, but it still does have an impact.
Sure.
And then, you know, we've been just concerned about our capacity to meet, you know, a lot of these thresholds and, you know, what are just opportunities for Blue Lake to be able to absorb some of this versus these larger entities being able to spread some of this out, you know, amongst their projects. We're pretty limited on where we can apply a lot of this.
Right. Okay.
And I just want to add to what you said. I totally agree that there's a number of things already happening in the city. I mean, for years, REBACOAS Energy Authority and REBACOAS Community Action Agency were going around and doing weatherization and solar, all this stuff for folks. And they kind of exhausted that on the residential level, but that was a pretty intensive effort, which helped people to conserve energy, basically. And obviously, we're trying to do things for alternative modes. I mean, you have the Annie Mary Trail, which is nice, these complete streets improvements here, you know, on the industrial truck route. There are resiliency projects like the water tank replacement going from old redwood tanks to steel tanks. And the mixed use development patterns. I mean, the city in the mid 2000s did that around the downtown and now in the Powers Creek District. And it's discussed in these caps how those type of patterns, especially in a smaller community like Blue Lake, can reduce vehicle miles traveled. You know, being a bedroom community means that people have to travel elsewhere for goods and services, having some of those in town, having more of a population that can support those uses would ultimately reduce VMT from current conditions. So yeah, there's absolutely definitely a number of things going on. And if this, the city adopts it, but is unable to achieve things, there's still going to be meaningful reductions in GHD emissions going forward that are local actions in addition to what the state's already doing on that end.
Okay. All right, those were all my questions. With that, seeing no more public comment, we'll close all of that we discussed, we provided comments, so we're moving right along. Let me get back up. This is a huge, huge packet, 483 pages. Let's get back to the agenda here. Great. So we have wrapped up item six and we're moving on to miscellaneous planner item. Anything?
Sure. Obviously, there's been a bit of discussion about developing the Powers Creek District. And just to give the planning commission update, we're expecting a revised application submittal with a new architect from Danco at the end of this month. We already sent it out for referral comments and tribal consultation based on and tribal consultation based on kind of a preliminary plan set to get initial comments. And we've addressed some of those comments. Danko, because they've moved the project over a bit to the east, has had to update their technical studies to make sure that the study area in those studies covers the current site. And so we've received most of those. We have some peer review comments for some revisions and things like that. So once we receive that complete applicant, well, I should say, that revised application supplemental, we'll be reviewing it for completeness. And then we'll continue work on the CEQA initial study using those updated technical studies. So that's where we're at at this point. It's going to be months, you know, before that project would come before the planning commission. We would have to circulate that CEQA document for a thirty-day period, just like we did with the negative declaration for the housing element update. And as I noted, based on the results of these technical studies, there are mitigations recommended, so it's likely that we would be recommending a mitigated negative declaration for that project. So that's, in essence, where we're at at this point on that project. Is there anything else you wanted to present on, Mandy?
Just, I guess, kind of a quick update on Greenwood. As you can see, we've got, the sidewalks are pretty well done, and we were actually going to be paving today. But unfortunately, the weather changed on us. So because of the anticipated rain the rest of the week, we're probably going to be paving, I think, towards the end of next week. And at the same time, we're also coordinating paving the Blue Lake Bike Park, which is super exciting. That's just been a project that has just expanded its capacity through a bunch of amazing volunteer work and investment and fundraising. And if you haven't had a chance to go look at it, you really should, because it's pretty spectacular. It went from a project where we thought we were all going to be like, you know, out there with our shovels and wheelbarrows, to being like, this is going to be literally probably the best bike park in Northern California, if not a greater footprint than that. So pretty exciting, it's moving forward really nicely. And we'll be having a lot of fundraisers that will be continuing. We've got a lot of work to do, but if we can get the paving done. We had a very generous donation by Mercer Fraser that's allowing us to utilize the funding we have to do the paving. So it's going to put us so much further ahead than we had anticipated we would be. So those are some great projects. The city council is working with the Eisner family and the Kane family on an option to develop the city corporation yard. So that's something that is also moving forward, which is pretty exciting. Getting that site cleaned up and looking at some development opportunities. And the city is also working with a group called Power Transitions to look at energy development on the former Blue Lake Power site to look at battery storage, which I'm pretty really excited about, because it's a nice project that takes advantage of the existing interconnect and allows us to be, still be part of kind of the green energy movement, but allows us to also look at other development as well. So it's very compatible with other development, whether that's recreation or housing or mixed-use retail commercial. So it's a pretty exciting time. We've got a lot of hurdles, one of the main ones being the existence of the power plant still. So we've been taking some demo crews through to get some cost estimates on what it might cost to demo that plant and clean the site. So that's a real active process right now. And then, just quickly, we also looked at the Calgon Carbon Site with the owners of Calgon last week and went through with a demo crew with them as well. And they are actively looking at demoing that site, cleaning it up, and hopefully looking at completing some environmental work to be able to get that to a point where it could be transitioned or sold. And that's something that the city's been, you know, really working with them closely to try and push that along. So lots of good things happening and things are moving. And it just seems like it takes forever. But if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer anything about the projects.
So on the paving, are they going to grind the street up a little bit first?
They are, so, yeah, we're going to do a full grind and repave. So, yeah, it'll be really nice. It'll be repaved, repainted. We're going to be doing Mustang color crosswalks by the school, so those will be blue and gold, so that'll be really fun. And then the bulbouts will also be planted. We'll have some gateway trees coming in. There'll be the flashing radar crossings and the raised crosswalks as well to help kind of slow down traffic. Yeah.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on to Item Number Eight. Our upcoming meetings for the next three months, we've got some dates here, November eighteenth, December sixteenth, and January twentieth. So are there any of those that anyone can see they would not be available for?
I know I'm gone.
Okay. Anybody else for November? Can we all be here for that?
Good for all those.
Okay. I'm not going to be here in December. So then we would still hopefully have a quorum. We'd have at least three of us. So it's like, I could be here for November and December. And are we getting another, did council approve? Do we get any other applicants? Do we have another? Oh, we are full, we just have, okay, great, great, great. Okay, good. All right, well. Public comment on the meeting times? Great, oh, yeah, oh, we do have a hand up. Julie, go ahead.
I'm sorry, you guys, I know it's getting late and I have sympathy for you. I really appreciate this time working on my farm still. Back to Item Seven, it wasn't open to public comment.
Oh, sorry, Julie, yeah.
That's cool, that's cool. But also, there's a lot of stuff that was listed within that, that, starting with Danko, it was already disclosed this evening that the state is doing funding to help that project, and without a housing element, we can't move forward. I think that needs further questions and discussion. The bike park, I think, is really amazing. I was a huge advocate to keep that property open as open space. It's some of our last open space that we have. Look at the Medieval Festival with overflow parking. We've been quoted at five thousand participants in our public park. We need the overflow parking. And to the battery storage, if we even check in with public works and waste management, and not our personal public works, but other county and waste management with the fires. And, you know, we're kind of wasting more space there. I know it's a great inlet, however, are we going to get any energy out of that? And then to the surplus land at the corp yard? I would like clarification from staff at this point, at some point. Where was the ninety-day process that this was presented to other entities outside of private? We basically went straight into negotiations, designated surplus, without ever having removed, like, Eureka did this. They took care of fifty percent of their inventory on their corp yard before they moved it. And I don't think we even should have designated it as surplus because of the fact that we still were a hundred percent there. And the ninety-day period, too, like, we out-tribe really went after Eureka City Council for that fact, for their first rights. And I really feel like there's just some things within that report I really hope our commission can dig into. And that's, I'm sorry to be that last dying nail in your guys' night, but I appreciate the time to put that out there for the public and for you there in-house. I think it's time to do some homework. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie, for your comment. Is there anybody else that wanted to give a public comment? I guess on either Item Seven, the miscellaneous planner items that I forgot to open up for public comment, or our agenda for the next three months? All right, seeing none, we are on to Item Number Nine, adjournments.
Option to adjourn.
Great. Great, all those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good night.